There has been ongoing correspondence between the Carnegie Borough and the Carnegie Volunteer Fire Department. On September 23rd, a letter was sent to Chief Candraks, and I will read it in its entirety. There Chief Candraks, as you know, Borough Council has requested they produce numerous documents concerning the operational and financial structure of the Carnegie Volunteer Fire Department for several months. I personally have met with you in detail the documents we needed to produce. To date, we have not produced any of the documents that I've asked for. The Borough of Carnegie has an obligation to ensure that the Fire Department entrusted to provide fire protection to the community is operated in a way that is consistent with rule of law. To that end, you are failure to produce side documents, including, among other things, a list of board members and meeting minutes creates doubt that Carnegie Volunteer Fire Department is being operated in an acceptable manner. It is the decision of our council that we can no longer accept the way that the Carnegie Volunteer Fire Department is being operated. As an initial first step, you are hereby notified and you have thirty days from the receipt of this letter to begin to comply with our request by establishing a board to oversee the operations of the Fire Department, begin to conduct regular meetings documented by minutes that will be shared with Borough Council. After the board is established, we will discuss other requirements as we proceed into the future. Failure to provide Borough Council with a list of board members and minutes from initial meeting within thirty days will result in Borough Council acting to decertify the Carnegie Volunteer Fire Department under its current leadership. Please understand that the Borough of Carnegie has no desire to disband the Carnegie Volunteer Fire Department or to contract outside fire protection. However, we can no longer accept the way you have been operating the department. And that was sent by our solicitor. The next correspondence was as of October 14th. Again emphasizing that we wanted him to provide certain things. We actually listed out seven different items, and I will read those items. Within seven days of the date of this letter, the Bureau shall comply with Borough Board meetings six dash six of four by transmitting to the Borough Secretary the names of all members and officers and shall update the Borough Secretary whenever there are new members or newly elected officers. Within fourteen days of this letter, the Bureau and its membership will convene a public meeting with Council. Within fourteen days of the letter, the Bureau shall convene a meeting of its membership from the parties of elected officers to fill vacant positions within the Bureau. Within seven days of the meeting, in paragraph number three, the Bureau's Board of Directors shall meet and amend the Bureau's Articles and Corporation by laws to create two voting seats on the board to be filled by Council appointees. Thereafter, this is number five, thereafter, the Bureau shall hold regularly monthly board meetings as well as any other meetings provided by the Bureau's Articles and Corporation. By laws, state and federal laws, provide minutes of those meetings to Council. Number six, within thirty days of the date of this letter, the Bureau shall retain an outside poolkeeper approved by Council who provide monthly financial reports to Council. And number seven, within forty-five days of the date of this letter, the Bureau shall retain an outside consultant approved by Borough Council who provide an overall analyst of the operation of the Bureau. Now, some of these, if we had a public meeting this past Wednesday, they will be holding an organizational meeting in December to elect officers. But I just felt it was important for those who weren't on in attendance at that meeting Wednesday understood what the correspondence was between the Fire Department and Borough Council.
Thank you. Just for a point of clarification, though, I think the first letter was the draft letter that we discussed on Council. I don't think that one was actually sent to the Fire Department. That was the draft letter, and the second letter came out of that draft letter that was sent to the Fire Department. Just for point of clarification purposes. Is there any other comment?
I would like to speak. On November 9th, 2011, there was a special meeting for the Fire Department, but this meeting had nothing to do with the membership or its exceptional performance for its firefighting or for its EMS services. It only dealt with the concerns that Mr. Councilman Sarsfield referenced in both the letters. The attendance at the meeting was one resident, and about twenty-five firefighters had attended the meeting. The reason for some of this correspondence to get started, it actually started back in June of this year, 2011, and when we had a meeting with one of the members of the Fire Department. He requested to come to the Borough Building and requested to have a meeting with, there was actually two Council people there to discuss the situation with him, of his concerns. The first item that he had was, he wanted to know about rumors that the EMS was being sold to another ambulance service called Northwest, which I'm not familiar with. And we didn't really know anything about that. He also had a concern as a nonprofit organization, they had no monthly meetings, no officers, no minutes of meetings, no Board of Directors, and no financial information. We had a subsequent meeting after that on August of 2011. The reason why I'm bringing this up or following up with what Mr. Sarsfield just read was that we had a chorus that evening where I got very frustrated over the remarks of Mr. Candraks at that meeting. So I'm going to read a statement to you. "I became very frustrated after hearing Mr. Candraks speak. All of the Council was asked for comments in relation to Mr. Candraks' comments. I was last to speak, and I spoke in a manner or tone that was inappropriate for the meeting."
Inappropriate.
Inappropriate, I'm sorry. "I want to apologize to everyone who attended the meeting and to Borough Council. My actions were wrong, but the content of my concerns were real and valid. We gave the Carnegie Fire Department so far this year approximately $160,000. Now, that's taxpayer money, and we need to have full disclosure of how that money's being used. So, I've been involved with this for a few months now, and I just blew up that night. I apologize. And I will, you know, if anybody wants me to go over to the Fire Department and apologize over there, but we have to get to the situation straight down in December. And they have agreed to reorganize and to appoint officers and do all the things they're supposed to do that a nonprofit organization's supposed to do. Our intent on Councils is to try to help them as much as we can and get this problem resolved so it doesn't come up year after year. So I hope you accept my apology."
No, I just wanted to comment. I do accept your apology, Mr. Behrs. I believe that it's sincere, and I believe that there has to be accountability at all levels of the sector, from within the confines of this building and from any department or departments that we do business with. And I think you had some valid points and questions, but I do appreciate your apology this evening. If I can continue with my report, I have just--
Yes, if I could make one comment as well. And I appreciate your candor and honesty, Councilman Behrs. You did ask pointed questions that obviously did need to be asked, and I agree with those. And the whole thing that we're trying to achieve with the Fire Department is accountability and making sure that they can function, like I said before, like any other department. We're not disputing the fact that they provide life-saving services that are there when we need them, but we are requiring accountability, and I believe Councilman Behrs was asking for that just that night. So, again, I appreciate your apology, and I do accept it as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a point of clarification, I do appreciate your apology too, but I think it kind of got beyond asking for accountability. It was actually a personal attack. And that's what happened that night, and that's why the Fire Department blew up and walked out. I personally wish we could have, and I know, I appreciate all the hard work everybody has done on this, and I know it's not an easy issue, but I think we could have gotten a lot further by meeting with them, not in a public meeting, and calling them out of the table. I think they would have met our demands when they were here that day. Many of them seemed like they were willing to meet the demands. I do believe there are some questions. Without a doubt, they need to work. It needs to be a 501(c)(3) and do, and follow the rules. I feel that 100%. But I would have liked to have tried, and I think we could have worked it out in a more amicable way. So, that's just a personal opinion. Thank you.
Well, if I could comment, Mr. Behrs, I've been dealing with the Fire Department since 2008, and we've always tried to be amicable, tried to work through things. And I think that so many times we hear specifically how it's important that we have public meetings and we bring things before the public. So, to put that in a public setting, I think it's taxpayer dollars. I think it needs to be brought forward. You've been Mayor for two years now, and this is the most outspoken I've ever heard you be on the Fire Department. As Mayor, you're part of head of public safety, and I think that perhaps earlier on, you should have been one of all things.
Once again, Mr. Sarsfield, thank you for your comment, but as far as my involvement in this, I was involved early on, but the powers that be asked me to step down because I decided to attend a council meeting and do my mayoral duties instead of attending a Fire Department meeting, which I had spoken with the Fire Department and asked them if I was going to be missing anything pertinent. And they actually said, "No, I wasn't." So it was one of those, it was one of the very early meetings when they were meeting. So, I chose to do what I was elected to do, is attend the council meeting. And then, at that point, you guys have pretty much shunned me and kept me out of the loop, but that's fine. During a public meeting, I am allowed my opinion, and I am given my opinion as far as I think this could have been worked out in the end. And I think some of the problems is between the relationship between Council and the Fire Department. And I think if we sometimes send them mixed signals, there are things that we were asking for just recently, which I do believe they need to produce, but it's the first time I heard them also. So, we need to make sure we're all together when we move forward and not just two or three people taking it in one direction.
No, but I guess my confusion stands for Mr. Behrs from, I don't understand why this needed to be a non-public meeting. I mean, you're all about keeping everything above board and keeping everything out there. Obviously, this was a decision that involves the entire community, I think.
First of all, I am about keeping everything above board, but it was about them getting their organization in order. And as far as that goes, they were more than happy to comply to all those things. But as far as a public meeting, it was your right to choose a public meeting. I think it would have gone a lot smoother without a public meeting because I think they, right away, they're adversarial right off the, no, no, they weren't adversarial that night, but they're, they come in here at a disadvantage, kind of ready to, I don't want to say battle, but at least to defend themselves. So, I thought there was a step that we missed. It definitely needed to be a public meeting if they weren't going to hear to all the, all that we asked them to.
But they were ignoring us. That's why we called for a public meeting.
That's your opinion, and they may have been. I'm not in all the--
The meeting that I had scheduled with Chief Candraks, he didn't attend, he didn't return any of the chief phone calls. So that, and then we sent the letter, and they didn't meet the meeting requirements anyway, regardless of the letter. I think this is a community decision personally, and I think the community needs to be involved in this decision. Obviously, if there's accountability to stake, and it's a taxpayer's dollars, I think the community needs to be involved in that, so I don't think it should be a closed meeting with only a few members of Council or what have you. It needs to involve the public, since it's a public trust. I mean, I don't know how you could possibly disagree with that.
Well, I don't disagree with the fact that public trust is important. But I was just thinking that, I personally feel that the situation could have been handled without a public meeting and called to the table. That's my own personal opinion, but it may not have been able to be handled. But I think we missed a step. That's my own personal opinion. I think there should have been a step in there where we tried to handle it with that. And you're saying that you feel you weren't getting responses, so maybe you weren't getting the responses you needed. You know, that's--
Well, I think all of this, Council, and you have a responsibility to basically hold whatever organization accountable, especially if we're giving the taxpayer dollars, and if we're not getting a response, obviously, the community needs to be involved in that, needs to be aware of that.
And I understand that, and I'm not saying you're wrong with that, but I just--
You're saying I missed a step.
Well, I think there was a step in there we could have worked to make them accountable for the taxpayer dollars, because right now, we're still in the same--
Without involving the public.
Well, the public really wasn't even here that day anyway, but I think what we--
Without offering the, without offering a chance for the public to have any comment.
Well, you know what, that's not what I'm saying, is not offering the chance. I'm saying that what was happening--
So the public, I'm sorry, I just don't, and I don't mean to be difficult, Mr. Behrs, but that-- Every decision up until this point, everything that this Council tries to do is keep everything out in the public, and that's what I've heard from the beginning of the time that you took office, keep it in the public. All of our discussions need to be in a public setting, and we tried to do that, and that was obviously a failure in your place in these eyes, in your eyes right now. And I just, I'm sorry, I just don't understand with, it's such a public issue. The Fire Department's been a public issue for the past few years, and if we don't provide, if we don't keep everything in the public light, we're going to be accused of hiding something. And that's what I don't want to happen.
Well, I don't want that to happen either, and I appreciate, I do appreciate your opinion on that. I'm just telling you that I thought we made some very good headway with the Fire Department.
And I agree.
And we were moving in a good direction, and I thought we could, we kind of set that back a little bit. So, that's all. But we do need to protect the public money, I said that from the beginning. They need to work as a 501(c)(3), so there's no disagreement there. I just think that we've kind of set it back a little bit, because especially the way the meeting ended last time. It ended very ugly. They walked out, they were yelling and screaming, and it was not, you know, the meeting was going fine for a while, but it rarely ended on a sour note. And it's going to take a lot to repair that damage. It's going to take a lot.
Well, I understand that, and I think we can do that, but again, that still doesn't, I mean, the public, the matter of the public trust is everything, all the meetings and all of that has to be kept in the public eye. And I think by having a public meeting, we put it on our website, we put it in the papers, we advertise it as much as we could to get the public involved, and the public didn't turn out in the end, but at least we gave the public opportunity to come in and comment on anything. And I think that's what it's all about. When it gets down to the bottom, the bottom, when you're separating the facts, you need, I agree with the Mayor, you need to keep everything out in the open. And this was one thing that definitely, since it's been obviously a community issue for the past few years, I certainly wasn't about a closed meeting with the Fire Department and try to hash out the differences when the community is involved in a day-to-day basis, and it's something year and year, obviously, to the community, whether we have a volunteer Fire Department or whether we do have to go outside. And hopefully, by working with the Carnegie Volunteer Fire Department Rescue Bureau, we get this worked out, and we can ensure that they are there for our citizens, and they are there for all of us because we depend on them. We depend on them on a daily basis, and we'll never be able to thank them enough for what they do. But again, like I said, it's a community. It's us, it's them, and you, all working together in unison to accomplish something and make it a better department and hold them accountable. So, I'm sorry, that's just something I felt that I needed to say tonight.
And I think as our President, you know, it makes me proud to be a member of this board. I think your leadership has taken us in the right, right direction. I think, you know, for the most part, we work as a unified body. But, you know, you need to be proud of, you know, your accomplishments and this board what we've accomplished together. I just wanted to add that in to close on my report on the veterans. The County Chief Executive, in partnership with the 9/11 Air Wing in Luton Township, we're doing an international phone call drive. If anyone wishes, they can bring a car to the municipal building, and we can deliver them for you, or you can take them directly yourself to the County Executive's Office at 436 Grand Street, First School. I also want to recognize Montana Trumbatta, who will be leaving for basic training after Christmas into the International Guard. That concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Seeing that we don't have the Fire Department here tonight, we're doing the Council, Behrs, report.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped you, Councilman. Sorry.
You did. Thank you, Mr. President. There are a couple of community events coming up during the next thirty days. Most of you are aware that St. Elizabeth and Seaton Parish has been undergoing major renovations during the past six months or so, and they will be having a special mass of rededication on the 20th of November, the Sunday afternoon mass at 3:00 at the church. The same day, there is also a Boys and Girls Club fundraising event, the same afternoon, but that will go into the evening, there's music, and that will be held at the Alpine Golf Club in South Fayette. And if you're interested in buying tickets for that fundraiser, you can see Councilman Behrs. A little bit later, December the 11th, there is an honorary dinner. I think most of you know Charlie Brown in Carnegie. He's a pastor, and his wife is also a pastor. And they run an organization which does a lot of community good, alcohol treatment, drug abuse programs. And one of them based, there's several, one of them's based right in East Carnegie. Their organization is called the Victorious Faith Evangelical Outreach, and they will be having a dinner in honor of Pastor Brown, and that will be taking place on December the 11th at 5:00 at Charrington, which is out in Luton Township.
Is somebody's mother?
Charrington.
Cherry.
Cherry. That kind of charity.
And Councilman Sarsfield says that this Wednesday is the last Wednesday for the farmer's market at Methodist Church, which is over at the border of Washington, Lydia Street. And that's all, Mr. President.
Thank you. Behrs, report.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had criminal arrests and citations, thirty-one criminal arrests and citations last month. Traffic citations were sixty-two, parking tickets were 162 dispersed, and complaints and self-initiated activity from our department amounted to fourteen. Recently, there was a, if you may have seen it on the news, there was a tip jar stolen from Ray's Petra. The perpetrators were caught on a nearby surveillance camera. The chief submitted the video to local news stations. This led to our department making two arrests in this case. We've also made one arrest in the Sunoco station break-ins, and there is another one pending. There was a home burglary on Charles Street where some antique firearm were stolen. We've had some very good detective work by Sergeant Ors, and we actually have a warrant out for someone's arrest who was involved in that. So, that one should hopefully come to terms relatively soon. Carnegie Elementary, they introduced a new bullying program at Carnegie Elementary. Sergeant Lit and I participated in the kickoff pep rally. It was a really uplifting pep rally, and the slogan there at Carnegie Elementary is, "Be a buddy, not a bully." In the trip yesterday, they had an article about school violence, and in that article, they said it was in Western Pennsylvania, that it was down significantly, and they attributed that to anti-bullying programs. So this was a good start for Carnegie Elementary to get in with the anti-bullying programs. And they will have a fundraiser for their anti-bullying program, and that'll be, it'll be a book fair at the Barnes and Nobles at Settlers Ridge, which is Wednesday, November 16th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. They will have face painting, scavenger hunt, and there will also, any book that is purchased in that timeframe, they will get a percentage of to support their program. On November 30th at 6:00 p.m., Carnegie Elementary will be hosting a, our department will be hosting a Drug Awareness and Prevention Seminar at Carnegie Elementary. Sergeant Lit will be the presenter. Down the road, it will also be a cyber safety one to follow. And that's with any parent, you don't have to, your child doesn't have to attend Carnegie Elementary. It's any parent who is interested in learning more about drug prevention. Please stop by. Also, more school news. Mrs. Miford of Carleton did a great job of taking the lead and trying to get a grant from the Pennsylvania Department of Education. I want to thank the partners that she worked with. It was our executive director of the library, Diane and Erin at the library, did a great job of helping her out. Also, the Boys and Girls Club was mightily involved in it. So what we're trying to do is establish after-school programming for children in seventh and eighth grade, junior high children, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And we'd be at all three locations with also some summer programming attached to it. So I'll let you know how that goes. Mrs. Miford did a great job of heading that up, so I really appreciate that. I want to thank this Carnegie Community Development Corporation once again for sponsoring this year's school page shop Carnegie newspaper ads. As you know, we're in the middle of November right now. The next time we will be in front of you will be probably the middle of December. By that time, many people here have already started a lot of their Christmas shopping. I hate to even bring that up right now, sorry, but I just want people to remember that when you do your Christmas shopping, remember there are a number of retail outlets within our community that have great gifts, especially great last-minute gifts. And there'll be full-page ads in the signal item to remind everyone of that. I'd also like to speak a little bit on business news. I want to congratulate Key Environmental. They were named by the Post-News as one of the top places to work as a small company in this area. Key has fifty-seven employees in the area. Each company, each company that was selected got to do a video, and one of the great things about Key's video is they definitely mentioned the fact that there's no better place to do business than Carnegie. So we appreciate that. It was President Jim Zuber who mentioned that. Another business note, Volmar America held their first PCD days ever for the industrial diamond tolling industry. This was, this effectively made Carnegie the center of the industrial diamond tip tolling industry with seventy individuals from companies all over North America, Europe, and as far away as Korea that attended this two-day event. They have a showroom down there. This is their North American headquarters here for Volmar America, and they have a showroom there, and they plan on doing this as a yearly event, so that was pretty, that's a pretty neat thing. So Carnegie, we were on the world map for a little while. Just one note on the Boys and Girls fundraiser. That's the Mansfield Five. It's $60 a ticket, and it is the Mansfield Five that will be playing there. Bishop Zubik will be performing the ceremony for the St. Elizabeth and Seaton dedication. And last, two last things. Bishop Lywood H. Lewis Jr. of Salted Rock Foundation Ministries celebrated his twenty-sixth pastoral anniversary. He had a nice dinner, and I was able to participate in that dinner, and he provided it with a proclamation for his service to honor his ministry but also our community. And lastly, but not least, is the chief once again is doing his Toys for Tots campaign. And it's, every year, it's tremendously successful, and it has to do with the giving that people get around Carnegie, so we appreciate anything you can give during this tough year. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any general public comment? Leah?
I understand that for this twenty-year kid, you're going to break a skateboarding thing up there and a doggy park.
No.
Or you're-- Or you're a paper, and according to comments of some of you people there, and I say to myself, I can't believe this. How mature is sunny to have bulletins there? Anybody can't afford to have a Thanksgiving dinner, go this year -- I don't know if the salads aren't well for two dollars some cents. Go to the food bank. What's important to society anyhow? People are important. You talk to somebody who's starving, and you come and go to build a skateboard up there. They worry about the kids getting fat. And the chief will agree with me. We used to walk from Covet Hill all the way to the high school and back at dinnertime and back at school. Now they're worried about the kids getting fat. They go to school, not to Batheland. They have to have buses to take them right to school, bring them right -- oh, they're getting fat. The kids don't have nothing to do. If they're alike, they'd have something to do. There's nobody home today. Dear God, I've been coming down here for years, Covet Hill. And I'll give you a couple comments, some of the people made whenever we meet down below. This one come to me after reading, he said, Leo, he said, you know what you ought to do? I said, what? He said, put a picket line across Covet Hill. I said, get all the people up there, and I'll get people to stand behind you. That would get into the conversation, see? Just like whenever they built a tunnel in Pittsburgh, federal government don't have no money. You see any senator saying that, the governor got a new station wagon, the wife got a station wagon, the lieutenant governor got a station wagon, and she goes, dear God, I'm a hard man, put the bills together. I ain't gonna come down every month and comment about this. Man, this gets back to basics. The only important thing in this whole wide world is peace. All every day in the paper, sheriff's sale. You put yourself in our shoe, just like any chief said, walk a mile in my shoes, then you know what I'm going through. People that are working that money don't mean nothing to them. And I want to thank you very much, and you have a good evening.
Thank you. The dog park, just for clarification, was in phase one for the park grant, so yes, that is true, and the skate park was in phase two, I believe, of the grant application for Carnegie Park. But the thing is that that's as far as the discussions went is for the skateboard park. However, honestly, Leo, and I'm just one member of council though, I think we need, if we're a community and if we're thinking about moving forwards and moving ahead, I do think we need to give the children of the community something to do. And so I respectfully disagree with you, and I hear what you're saying, but I do disagree because I think the children, there's children in the community that do need things to do, and if a skateboard park keeps them out of trouble, I think that's something that this council needs to consider at some point. And like I said, I may be the only one voting on this council, but I certainly would urge this council to at least consider it and at least talk about it rather than just turn a blind eye to it and not say that we do anything, so I wouldn't totally be opposed to it, so.
Yeah, and that being on phase two, I mean, I understand that that park plan was largely in place before any of us even began to sit on this board. However, you know, if I had the option to remove a skateboard park and replace it with someone, I couldn't do that. I mean, we have to have activities for kids, and I understand where you're coming from, Leo. Money's money, and dollars are dollars, but if we have a community that doesn't recognize children, don't have activities, we don't draw on these families, and we don't become a better community. I mean, these are some things that move us forward, not back.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Please step forward, state your name and address.
My name is Billard Village. I live at twenty-second Ray Drive, and I will complain to be here tonight, and I even still don't think, should I be here or not? But I was advised by Councilwoman Coney, I talked to her last night about something, about some kind of problem that I have the last few months, and she recommended me to explain my case. Can I explain this?
Yes, please. And if I could say, the reason, I just found out tonight, the reason I wasn't familiar with your case is apparently it started like three years ago, and I've been on council two years, so I was like, fill me in on this, so, but I'm glad you came tonight. Thank you for coming.
I tried to be, you know, sure, and I was like, maybe.
We're actually aware of your case, and I believe our solicitor can address it at this point in time.
Yeah. Basically, from what I understand, they were doing water repairs when your store, the sore ladder broke.
Yes. No, yeah, I don't know.
And they replaced a sore ladder to your house three years ago.
That's what, I don't know, but either, so maybe go to hire a company to do work on the sore ladder.
Yeah, and now, to my knowledge, your problem started less than a year ago.
I can explain this.
Well, at this point, the contractor is just saying that it happened three years ago, and I have no record of any complaints within, until, like I said, less than a year ago, probably less than six months ago. It's kind of hard to tie your problem to the contractor, but ultimately, the dispute seems to make to be between you and the contractor, not really the borough. Because the borough hired the contractor, they did the work, while the borough hired them, they did the work, and the contractor's with them, they're responsible for the work they do, and at this point, I mean, I don't see anything that the borough did itself wrong.
Can I say a few words? I want to, you know, go into details. The borough hired the contractor to do work on the sore ladder, and when they get this situation, they broke my water line, and they fixed it. And they didn't fix it well because it was hot, it lasted some time, and I noticed that there was some kind of problem with the water in my house, but it was not visible, nobody could see that. Over the time, problem was worse and worse, worse and worse, until at one point, when I actually figured out that there is a water leak on that spot where they did the work, is where they broke it. I thought it was water company, they came, they told me, yes, there is a leak on your property, and you have to fix it. Then I filed for a express situation, I came here, express situation, hoping that, because I don't know who did the work, I have no idea, the name of the company, nothing. I expected that Carnegie Borough, the contractor, that the company asked me to fix the problem. I was kept in the dark for probably four months. Problem became worse and worse, and finally, just before the November the first, it was firsthand, actually, I can saw, I can see water falling from that spot. I filed another complaint, explained everything in more details, you know, why did it happen? How it happened? I'm just finished. And then, I came into position last week that somebody from the borough called water company, they shut the water off. I saw people from public department, whatever it was, driving around. I stayed home, hoping that somebody fixed the problem, because I think I called Mr. Stephen, waiting to see what would happen. After maybe three, four hours, then I saw that nothing could be done. I hoped that, actually, because I saw a vehicle walking around, I thought, and before that, the company came twice to check whether what's going on. They even marked, they made the marks on the street. I expected they would do something, otherwise I didn't hire a plumber to fix the problem. This day, I was kept completely, you know, in the dark, and I can tell you, then I fixed the problem, mentally dark, the area, we find out there's a problem, it's not in the spot, they broke the line, we replaced, they put that their own, you know, pipe. Problem was very, very faulty. I have everything documented here. It's obvious that they did the damage. And I knew from the beginning, because it was on that spot. If I knew that I had to do something, I could do it and then try to find other ways to solve that. But I was kept, also, I can tell you.
When was your first, when did you come down, or when was your first?
It was probably in the June, that year.
Sure.
Because even I didn't, I didn't see water leak anywhere except I could hear sound of pouring water in the house.
See, and here you have the problems, I understand, this is what I was told today. Don't pull me on a damn five percent. If I say that it's not great, it's not great. The pipe's only eighteen inches down, and the normal insulation's thirty-six inches. And how this matters, is from what I understand, this was caused by our engineer when he came out there and looked at it. The pipe's only eighteen inches down, the normal insulation's thirty-six inches, and that means that the pipe, even though they broke it at a point three years ago, the pipe is susceptible to freeze loss, when it freezes, when it falls. And that was aware and terrible, the pipe that wouldn't be there if it was not, if the problem died. Is that right, Leo?
This is, this is the date.
I mean, this is what I was, this is what I was told by our engineer today. I have no idea how to address this. I do know that they, that our engineer had made a recommendation to Mr. Solis. Mr. Solis' concern is that if he goes in here now, three years later.
Who is Mr. Solis?
He's the person that didn't work. If he goes in there now and does this, and he doesn't, and more damage is done, he's going to be responsible for it, okay? I know that there was a discussion of proposal that the engineer was going to make to him, to approach you with, to fix the problem. It was just this afternoon we discussed about it, so we discussed it, so I don't know.
Yeah, we have, we'll get back, we have, trust me, I've seen, I've been copying, I can read emails, and.
Did you see? Because I tried to explain what happened, and I was hundred percent sure that they didn't do the job right. I have a feeling that they used very bad, you know, quality of the pipe, and it broke, and over the time, it was worse, it was worse, it was worse. I ended up with a fountain in my property, and then I had to do something. Again, the same, that day, completely, I was completely kept out of room. I didn't know what was going on. I tried to talk to somebody. In fact, somebody told me, okay, you have to fix it by yourself. I would try to do it. Then to try to find other way to get it back. I was kept completely dark for three, four days, even people, they were going around. Twice they came to the company. They made enough marks, they even took pictures, and nobody came to give them, okay, we don't want to be charged.
And appreciate that, when the problem, if the problem started within the first year.
Probably, no, I cannot be sure, because.
Yeah, that's where the concern is with the contractor. Like I said, there was a proposal that the engineer made today, to, for them to approach you about resolving this, and if you give them a day or two to see if they.
I visited them, I had to visit them, but they.
So what's next?
I visited, I want to get embarrassed for that more. That's my point. That's my point.
You know what I think? If you just wait a couple days.
Yeah, if you could just give us a little bit more time, because we're trying to, trust me, I'm trying to make the, I'm trying to push the captain's brakes. I can't make you any promises, but I believe you, so let us see what we can accomplish if you can give us a little bit more time, please.
I'll give you time, I just, I didn't know that I should come here. I thought, I thought that I would again, you know, write the letter, send information, try to find.
This was a hot topic today, and they're going to, I don't think they're going to just fake it, that they thought that it was still broken. I think that they'll come to you, from what I understand.
Okay, good sir. I had to visit them, I was out without the water from, actually, Saturday morning. I had to do something, I found a guy who would come. I actually did most of the work. He came, fixed the pit hole, it's a problem that, that port, but they were there, and when they broke it, they put a red piece of the pipe, and it broke that. Okay, I apologize, really, I'm.
Would you have this back?
No, I have, I have. Okay.
I just want to make another comment. Mr. Sarsfield says they'll give the kids something to do. Am I right, am I pointing you correctly?
Yes, sir.
How about the kids that like to race on a little bit, or like to ski, you want to do something for them too? Give them something to do. You going to provide a bus for the kids from Covet Hill up there? They can't walk, that's why. No, not today. And I thank you. I hope you still think of Covet Hill. Believe me, whatever I tell you, and within civilian homes up there, it's a mess, and someday, somebody's going to kill up there. Too late. Thank you, and good evening.
Thank you, man.
Leo, have a happy Thanksgiving.
Come forward, you can come forward.
Your turn.
Okay. My name's Brian Zaffara, I'm twenty-six. First time home buyer here in Carnegie, but I'd say it seemed like a fine place, so I started it out, but that's not why I'm here tonight. So I know you're ready to go. Seeing me triple in trivial condition, just because of the weather, I might as well explain myself. Recently, I erected a carport, temporary structure, store bought, I don't know, I think you guys can understand, I really don't like getting in the car, digging my car out. Apparently, though, portion of it is on a paved alley, and I guess my neighbor didn't particularly like my carport, it was struck in that alley, so the code enforcer came out and told me, and he was very polite, and he recommended I go. So basically, I'm here to appeal to you. I'm asking you guys, please, I just want you to go for a little month, take it out in the summertime.
And I'm sorry, what street did you say it was on, I didn't hear?
Alice Street.
What's the address?
Three twenty-four.
Three twenty-four, Alice? Alice?
Alice.
Is there any way you could move it along? If you could run a little bit?
I mean, it's pretty much as far as we can go, close to my home. You just, there's no street there. I really don't see what, I mean, if there is a problem, I don't understand what the harm is, having to put feet on the paved alley, it doesn't exist. If you guys want to build a road there, I mean, it's a temporary structure, feel free to have it, you know. I mean, I don't think so.
Well, we can't obviously give you a decision tonight. We can investigate it and see what the options are. We'll talk to Terry and get all of the circumstances, because honestly, this is the first time hearing about it, so.
So I was instructed to have it moved by the search. Is there any way I could have the suspended until you investigate?
Well, Chief, can you talk to Terry about that later? Yes, we'll talk to, we'll discuss that with our code enforcement officer.
Yeah, I spoke to him, he said I should. I do appreciate your attention, Agent, thank you.
We'll definitely look into it. Thank you.
Do we have his name and number and?
Yes.
Yeah, I can get afterwards, we get it from Perry.
Oh, Perry Nesta.
Okay. Okay, well, Councilman Gordon Boffner, will we get with Councilman Sarsfield?
I just want to extend a belated Happy Veterans Day to all our veterans and thank them for their service to our grateful nation, and a Happy Thanksgiving to everyone. We actually celebrated Thanksgiving this past Saturday because Brian leaves for basic training on Tuesday, so we had early Thanksgiving. It was pretty fun. It was nice weather that day and stuff like that, so we kind of got to the turkey before anybody else. But Happy Thanksgiving to everybody, and thank you to those who came to the meeting this evening, and we'll see you next month.
Thank you. Councilwoman Duncan?
I'd like to wish everybody a pleasant Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Councilwoman Coney.
I have a couple of things. First of all, I do want to thank Danny here, and please take back to the rest of public work, I don't know if you've noticed, but the wreaths are up, they're lit up for the holiday season. I think the town looks great, so thank you, Danny and Ruth, for all your hard work. Second thing is, one more little school item, the mayor, mayor. Second thing is, one more little school item that the mayor may or not know, the, um, baseball boosters, now, come on, we got to think about April and baseball season, okay? Um, they're going to be having a lot of fundraisers, one of them, we'll have more information on them, as soon as they're going to have comedy night in April, but right now, they are selling hoagies, pizza rolls, and pizza kits, and they're from the Italian bread place done by Double Manor, I don't know if you've ever had their stuff, but it's great, and, um, the other thing is, we are going to be lighting the holiday tree, we will be having light tonight, Friday, December the second, six thirty P M, at the tree at, I call it PNC Plaza, I have no idea why, but at PNC Bank, where the memorial is for the police and the fire officers, we'll be lighting the trees, Santa will be coming, we'll have hot chocolate and coffee and cookies, and, um, since it is light tonight, we have glow sticks for all the kids, and we have candy canes, so please come and bring your children, and finally, I do want to wish everyone a merry Christmas and happy Thanksgiving, and I know there's lots of things I'm thankful for this year, and I'm sure we can all try to do one little thing for that, thing we're thankful for, so, so we meet again in December for my Halloween tree. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Ferris?
Just want to say Happy Thanksgiving, and I think Mike Sarsfield is having some kind of a very, a very big bash at your house on Thanksgiving.
No, we, that's where we had it early.
Well, in case he was, I was going to go there, but now I won't, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Delos.
I wanted to comment that I think the line banking in Heidelberg and Scott Township is a complete disaster. I know we have nothing to do with that, but there's good traffic and there's bad traffic, and I think that's a bad traffic situation, I mean, I've already been avoiding current nights, as it is for the last six months, and now I think I'm never going to go through there again.
I won't be scootering there, Rick, I'm afraid of getting killed.
I mean, in front of the Exxon there, where they've changed lanes in front of the Exxon, somebody is going to get killed.
There's going to be a head-on collision.
Yeah, and anyway, well, that's another matter, but there's some good traffic news in Carnegie, if you've noticed, it's along the Beechwood Avenue, because people are coming into town for these shows, and Stage Sixty-two is having, they're drawing people into the town, and Papa Jay's is one of the beneficiaries, of course, of that traffic, but, um, that's a nice traffic problem to have, it's when people are coming into Carnegie for events, as opposed to avoiding Carnegie, as where avoiding kind of word is not touching now.
That's all I have, thank you, Rick. Um, yeah, really.
Pray for me when I scooter there.
I would just like to thank, obviously, Councilwoman Covey for the Halloween promenade, it's, it's a wonderful event, I sound alone, so you can't say enough about it, so thank you, thank you for everything, and I know that's a lot of work that goes into that, it was obviously a nasty day.
Well, I will say thank you, but I do have wonderful community people, I couldn't do it without them.
Please thank them, I'd be.
I definitely would.
Uh, I'd also like to thank Councilman Sarsfield for Public Safety Day, having lifelight this year, I believe it just added another layer to, I guess, I'm, I'm blessed because I have a small child, obviously, and I get to participate in all these events, so it's a wonderful thing, seeing something for children instead of the child's eyes, so it's especially, I'm especially thankful for needing individuals to do anything for the children of our community, since I'm a father, and obviously it means so much to me, so, again, thank you, thank you, Mike, um, I appreciate what you guys do, and obviously, one day I'll hold Councilman and Mayor's House. Uh, just an update on the, I don't know if anyone's been paying attention to the redistricting, but the preliminary redistricting plan, at least at the state level, is that right now we are in the forty-fifth district, which Nick Codick is our state representative, if the preliminary plan goes through, the forty-fifth district would shift to the eastern part of the state, and our district would be merged into the forty-sixth district, and we would, um, be a little bit of a larger district, and I, I understand redistricting has to happen every ten years, but obviously, I don't think it's right that we have two incumbents that have to run against each other possibly right now, uh, in order to represent our district, and I really feel that we're going to possibly lose out if this, if this path continues, with this redistricting. They'll review it, and possibly tweak it and make some changes, so that we don't lose our forty-fifth district, because I feel we lose our individuality if we, if we lose that. Um, and last but not least, I can tell you that I was a victim of a crime this past week. Um, and if you think it can't happen to you, it can't, someone broke into my car Tuesday, Tuesday and the Wednesday evening, um, so anyone can be a victim, it's a crime of opportunity, some, they take some things, they sometimes, they did, they took some things, and they didn't take other things, and I can't tell you why, what the reasoning behind it was, but lock your cars, obviously, um, anyone can be a victim, it's, it's that simple, and you never think it can happen to you, but it can very easily, and it's kind of shocking when it does, you go out there the next day and see your car's been rifled through or what have you, and in my case, they sat in my car and smoked cigarettes, because I found a cigarette, blah, 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 so it was especially brazen and bold, and my car wasn't parked on the street, it was in my driveway, actually, between two homes, so it's especially bold, and it kind of, I wish, it kind of concerns me that this could happen, if this was this brazen, brazen and bold, it could happen, and to anyone, anytime, what have you, so just, my recommendation is, please, don't be a victim, and lock your cars, and just be aware of things, and be aware of your community, and report anything suspicious to the police, obviously, and again, Happy Thanksgiving to everyone, I hope you have an enjoyable holiday. I need a motion to adjourn.
I'd like a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, motion to remain second, all those in favor, super flag, I say aye. Motion there, thank you, everyone.
You don't have to worry about my break after your car, it's more money.
I know, I know, I'm a cigarette.
I'm a fire, what, what, what are you going to make, what?
Well, it's, 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 it's.
I jumped on.
I know what you're talking about.
I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, when I was, I've been through it all the time, it's such a devil, I like to let the shop stay. He said, I don't understand what you're saying, so I flirted, please, I said, if you're not offering by Walgreens, you've got two dogs, you get them, why you like to buy that?